...read by Councilman James. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for reading here. I turned over my card so we could all hear. We'll start with Councilman reports. Councilman Ray or Paulson.
I'm on an awful lot to report that since we last met, into the Southwest Valley Chamber of Congress meetings as a board member, and that is very interesting. It's really kind of a dynamic organization that's been growing, so it's encouraging. They've got a broad view of the Southwest Valley, trying to move things forward in that, in the Southwest Valley and primary Valley, entire Southwest Valley, not just one community. So that's really interesting and fun to read part of. That's what we have a lot to have from our group.
Thank you for your report. Councilwoman Mac.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, let's see, we, uh, over the past month, uh, met with Matt a couple of different times, to discuss some of the issues ongoing with the city, uh, Ann and I, and Matthew, uh, a good conversation, and I appreciate his time, uh, the issues that we were able to discuss. Also, I go to St. Peter's Church, which is directly west of the lake, and, um, there is concern, there's obviously been concern about the, uh, about the crane plume. Think y'all are aware of the crane plume? But, uh, also I understand that we may have, uh, a new issue, and I'm going to be very interested in kind of what, how that's going to be resolved and how we're going to deal with that moving forward.
So, the, um, Cities and Leagues Conference is coming up, and we're, we're going to have another booth. That's where all the cities have their little booths that, not little, some of them are little, were little, shows off our stuff, and I have to say that I did have to edit some of the signs this year because some of the things that we had that said "coming soon," we had to take out "soon." It now just says "coming." So, that way it'll be a generic sign, in particular Historical Society and so on, so, anyway, but I'm excited about that. We're back, we're back in action, and, um, we'll show off our stuff.
Thank you. Councilwoman James.
Sure.
Really, it's, uh, the only thing that, I mean, I know that you're being impressive a lot of it in your City Manager's Report, but the two most pressing things that continue to get hammered on in the communities about the water pressure issue, which we're going to have to discuss, and then secondly, uh, people surprisingly do read the minutes from the City Council meetings in the city, so that was good, is, uh, once again, defer to when you get to your report, is the implementation of the, the speed limit lowering on the drag strip, uh, between Camelback and on Dicer and Litchfield Park. So maybe you can press towards when you, but that's all I have.
Thank you. You know, is it Vice Mayor or... Did you have a report, Mr. Vice Mayor?
I have not, I didn't.
Okay, hopefully, you can hear me send them. He sent no report. Okay. Okay, so we'll go on then with, uh, I guess with my report. I don't actually have a report. There was a very, a very disheartening deal with things like, uh, talking about the police for the, uh, for the Hilltop with Sun Health. We've had some, some meetings with Sun Health on that. We've had, uh, lively discussions about how the Hilltop may be laid out in terms of its site plan and where the different, different, um, building features that we had put on the, on that campus where they should be, or whatever that one had. And we spent some time on other, other issues such as the issue of this right and right out and the east end, so. With that, we'll go on to the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. You will find the reports for June. A lot of your council packets out there on everything that's in those, just a few of those things. Staff continues to move the city of Good Year, Guarding Room, and Train Depot. We think we have found a path forward to do that. We just had it done over here. Just as a reminder, we'll be splitting those costs to the city of Good Year to relocate that train station. And the more we get into it, the more we think that the same people that built the Wigwam organizational house and Litchfield House probably only built the train depot because they have so many similarities from the buildings. We can't prove it yet, but that's what we think, so, we're working on that. Something interesting too, staff has obtained a quote to move Scout Lodge. The same people that are going to move the train depot think they can move Scout Lodge successfully. And I'm not going to get into the logistics of that, but it can be done, so, we'll be, we'll be working toward that. Um, a few other things, as Councilman James said, of course, one of the biggest issues we're all dealing with is water pressure. City staff gets complaints on this on a daily basis on how bad water pressure is, particularly Litchfield Greens. City staff has been doing testing around the city, and I can say for one of our locations, we had tests last week of eleven pounds at a city park, and the requirement is twenty pounds. All people understand how that requirement works, and what the requirement is, it's twenty pounds at a spigot with a nearby fire hydrant open. You still have to have twenty pounds, but yet we're testing eleven pounds when that one's closed. Anyway, uh, we will be moving forward with that, and the city will be taking all appropriate actions on that issue. Also in waste management, we have an agenda on later tonight to talk about waste management and transition of the contracts. I won't get into a deep dive with that. Um, I would tell you also, all the kids that broke into the Litchfield House back in February, we have been dealing with that. Three of the kids that were the misdemeanor kids have pled guilty to misdemeanor trespassing, and the two other kids that are pled guilty to felony counts. So now it's just a question of restitution itself, and it has been turned over to our insurance, and they will be dealing with their returns on that issue. At this time, I welcome any questions Council has if there are any sort of reports here.
Questions for Council? Councilwoman Mac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, for that report, by the way, but there was also, I don't know if you noticed, the Independent, I got it today, the front page, the second article of the front page of the Independent was about the water pressure and the issues involving it. It's not... I, I talked to a landscaper today, and, um, he said there are some areas where they don't even have enough pressure for the pop-up heads to pop up. Uh, it's just, it, it, there's got, there's just some problems that have to be dealt with, but I don't know how we're going to deal with that going forward.
Councilwoman Mac, I would tell you for us that we are going to lose a lot of all the industries on all the Litchfield Road. We just will. Um, if you notice around the flagpole, we're losing the rose bushes around the flagpole for that reason. And also, as you, you may remember, at this time of year is your September anyways, when we start doing overseeding at the parks. That costs the city thirty-five to forty thousand dollars to do that overseen, but it takes a lot of water, bring that grass seed up. And because we don't have enough water, we're not going to do overseen. And what that probably means for the city and for the citizens to know is that if our parks turn yellow this winter, that's fine. Takes water, keep it green, just us. Councilman James, I remember you had another question. Um, the speed limit, sir? Yes, sir. So we have talked with Avondale PD about that, and enforcement will begin on Camelback and Litchfield around September fifteenth. I'd be glad to speak on that for a girl on the side of your car.
Will we get flashing signs?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a light in the heat?
Two weeks in advance.
There'll be flashing lights.
It's awfully slow, just saying.
You have a question?
One last question, just, uh, just an update on, uh, the health parcel, if you could. I mean, it's not that it's, they've submitted plans, but you stay for it.
Absolutely. So the health plans have been submitted. Staff have come reviewing those. There have been some changes in those plans from what we discussed before, and because of that, they will most likely be coming back through DRB and back through council, but the plans have been submitted.
All right, a couple of items that I thought of after listening to your report. First of all, as I realized that I skipped Councilman Claire. Councilman Claire, did you have anything you wanted to say in the report? Councilman report? Can you magically see him or not?
Yeah, I can see him. He's unmuted.
Sounds like he has no report.
Oh. Hold on. I'm trying to listen.
All right, we're going to go on about his report. Something to add on to the, this liberty water issue, one of the things we found out is that there's, there are significant questions about some of the fire hydrants that are throughout the city. And I've asked staff to approve of their app, so that we can see exactly where every fire hydrant is, and everyone is going to be tested to see whether or not. So we're going to handle that as part of this, this whole water pressure issue. All right, then we want to then to respond to the last meeting, it's called Community. Last meeting, Mr. Roger Williams asked us to look at changes in time of construction hours. Can, can he ask for a beginning at one hundred and six AM? I can see staff with Mr. Williams, and I think they got it resolved into the place for his house. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
I'm going to be honest, you can catch me off guard here.
You told me you talked to him, so I'm assuming you did. We'll take a look.
Yeah, I, I'll get back to you, sir. I'm sorry. Lot, lot of trains in my head. I apologize.
We'll, we'll take a look and see if there's anything that you can change or, or our rules about construction hours.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
You reminded me when you said that, sir. I'm sorry. Yes, sir, we did. I, I talked, I talked to the gentleman, and we did talk with the construction company. You may remember, Mayor Council, his concern here was them starting early in the morning. They were making too much noise, and we did talk to the construction company, and they agreed that they would not be working before six AM. And we spoke with Roger also, and he was okay with that.
So I think, but I think again, this, this issue, and today, I'd love to see if we have, excuse me, if we need to change it or if we should cover that picture. Uh, that brings us to this meeting, it's called Community. I don't have any requests to speak. It's incorrect, so we don't have any requests. This is not a opportunity for the citizens to address the council on a non-adjournant item. If you want to speak, raise your hand and vote for it. All right, seeing that, we're going to move on. We'll, the presentation section of our, of our agenda, the first item is a presentation, and we'll leave our proclamation. Which I should, you know, have here, just for us to know if there's the right one. Uh, our, our Little League, once again, won the District, two twenty, twenty twenty-three District and State Championship for nine to eleven-year-olds. We're going to recognize that, and for that reason, I'm preparing a proclamation. Now, hopefully, we, we don't have any Little League players here, right? All right, so we're not going to read the whole proclamation. It will be in the minutes on the website. And we're quite proud of our Little League team, and we're happy that they're performing so well and bringing, uh, bringing good reputation for the city legislature board. Next item is a proclamation concerning U.S. Constitution Week. As well, they published on the website. It will not be a brochure, it will be the fair proclamation to see. And it reminds people how important our constitution is to our, to our countries, to our lifestyles. And it asks us about a, to be, uh, to, to remember the constitution this week, and remember that it, how important it is to each of our lives and the freedoms that we enjoy. And finally, there is an employee quarter. I would, I would say that we're not going to read this one, which I might be wrong, because the employee quarter is, is one of the most important things that we do, and it is an opportunity for the council to recognize an employee that has been voted on by other, non-management employees, as a person that's been most responsible during the quarter for the performance of our city staff and doing their jobs for our residents. Um, I'm happy to announce that this quarter, the Employee Quarter, is Pat McBoy. Congratulations. Thank you. It used to be I got to give you a gift, but I can't give you a gift anymore because now I understand the gift is you get a day off. That's just perfect. So thank you very much for all of your service to our community and the great job you're doing right now. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. All right, next item is a presentation. I think it's slightly of our order, isn't it? No, that's because it's a whole set of paper. No. All right, so the next item is, is, is a presentation of an award from the Government Finance Officers Association to provide, to give us, to recognize the quality of our finance department and our financial reporting systems with a certificate of achievement, achievement for excellence in financial reporting. Do you have anything you'd like to say, Mr. City Manager, since I'm not here?
Yes, sir, I will. Um, Mayor Council paid to state her apologies that she couldn't be here tonight. But I would like to say, we, we win this award year after year, I should say, Paige, and the finance department does. They do a great job. And as I said before, having worked for cities in the past, that less something to be desired financially, this shouldn't be taken for granted. It's a blessing and it's an honor to our department, to our city, and we're always glad to receive this. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us then to our reports. The first report is Good Year's Fire Department.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Ed Paul, Deputy Fire Chief with your fire. I'm here to go over June and July's fire stats. June, we ran a total of sixty-nine incidents in Litchfield Park. Four of them were fires. Fifty-eight of them were EMS calls. Three of those were car crashes. Four service calls, four good-intent calls, and three false alarms. Our CR vehicle, the community response, did respond to three of those incidents, and our fire prevention performed sixty-five occupancy inspections. In the sixty-nine calls, I usually point out Valoma and Hacienda for you. Valoma had twenty-three total incidents. One was a fire. It was, uh, it was reported as a fire. It really wasn't a fire. Uh, it was more of a malfunction because of a hot water gate. Uh, check electrical. Uh, somebody had a problem with their dishwasher, so the resident called Fire Department. They said they saw smoke, so I get it. Uh, four fall injuries, and one of those fall injuries got transported to the hospital. Uh, and, uh, eleven total transports out of Valoma. Hacienda had seven incidents. Three of those were falls. Two of those falls were transported, and a total of five transports out of that facility. July, numbers went up a little bit, ninety-three incidents total. There was one fire that was an outside barbecue fire. Seventy-nine EMS calls. Three of those were car crashes. One service call, it was, uh, somebody at the storage facility that somehow had their vehicle running inside the storage yard, and then went outside, they couldn't get to their car, so they had to call Fire Department to let them back in to get their car. Well, no. Let's see, six good-intent calls and six false alarms. Valoma, for July, had twelve incidents total. Five of those were falls, and none of those people got transported to the hospital. There were four total transports out of that facility. Hacienda had fourteen total calls. Six of those were falls. Four of them were transported, and ten total transports out of that facility.
Okay.
Any questions?
Questions for David Paul. Thank you for your report. Appreciate your service to our community.
Thank you.
Next report is from Chief Espinoza for the Avondale Litchfield Park Police Department.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Uh, as always, thank you for having us. I wanted to swing by and, uh, just thank you guys for the last two years. It's been two years. I feel repoffed for that, or just a little bit over two years since we, uh...
Twenty-four, yeah.
Yes, it does. It sure does, doesn't it? So, the last two years have been great. Uh, working with you and your staff, Mr. Williams and his staff, has been, uh, nothing but positive, and we appreciate that relationship, and to, uh, celebrate that, we created a challenge coin. We are big, uh, on challenge coins at the Jacksonville Police Department. Uh, we have a close relationship with the, our military partners, so we created these challenge coins, uh, and wanted to give you six of them, one for yourself, and five, uh, for your staff to, uh, residents of the Litchfield Park. So again, thank you for the last, uh, two years, and, uh, we enjoy the partnership.
Thank you, Council. We appreciate, uh, the service you've been providing, and, uh, through our residents, and we're really happy with a lot of police presence and the fact that we see the patrol cars, and I think that everyone in the residents feel the same way because of the effort you raise for it, and so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We really appreciate it, and as I expressed to you guys before, our philosophy on policing is very simple. We understand why we exist, and we are, uh, here to provide quality police services. So we're always, uh, open to suggestions. If there's anything that we can do better, or we can do better, uh, please do not hesitate. Thank you. Thank you for helping us.
Hello, Sergeant William. How many of you want to go over the work for June? Uh, for June, we had two hundred and ninety calls per service. Uh, other than that, as far as, uh, we had, probably a phone a little smaller, but for June, busy there. So, we had forty-two traffic stops, uh, seventeen accidents. Sorry about that. As far as the overall assistance that we had, uh, we did have, uh, DUI for the Wigwam. There was a situation reported, and we responded there. The female was living in a house, we had two, we could tell her the image of cars we were going to pull over as far as any accidents in the area. We discovered two separate accidents in Litchfield Park where they had, uh, hit people's residences in the street. So she was cited with a DUI and charges for that. We also had another incident, uh, at Hubble Hall over here on Old Litchfield. We had a subject that was a girl's in. Had gone in, ordered a meal, bought a wine, uh, assumed everything was intoxicated, and then left hanging in the hole. Uh, was trying to hide behind the city hall. We were able to locate her. Uh, she admitted to it, and she was a resident of that as well. So for July, uh, we had, uh, two hundred and fifty-eight calls to the service. Um, although we had eleven accidents, thirty-seven traffic stops. You can see our property crime. We had eleven criminal damages, which is a lot higher than normal. A lot of that stemmed from one incident. We had overnight, we had a group of, you know, children, kids that were baking cars and baking houses. So, they were all separate reports, so they had numbers a little bit higher than they should be, but, um, we weren't able to find out who they were. We were able to get video surveillance and follow up and get pictures of them to kind of get it out there and get a lookout for them. Uh, fortunately, that was simply time to have done it. They haven't been doing it in the system. Some major incidences that we had in July, is we had, uh, we had a hit and run over a roundabout at Willow's Parkway, or Willow's Parkway. The, uh, driver had a yield sign locked down. Uh, we were able to get a license plate. He utilized a block, ended up being a landscaping vehicle. Uh, they were very uncooperative. Those drivers working with us, they wanted to do anything with it. Uh, so we ended up, uh, charging them with the hit and run and filed charges, uh, to the city prosecutor for that. We also had, uh, uh, shoplifting, uh, shoplifting ring that'd be going around the valley. The prize here at Camelback, as long as yours has been hit on that. Uh, but a lot of, uh, money and damage. We had five circumstances, it was like sixteen hundred eighty-five dollars. Our community action team and recovery officer were working that, and, uh, kind of working, putting in schedules out of case sixty throughout the valley, were, uh, able to identify the suspects and make arrests on that as well. We had, uh, I'm sure you heard, back on July thirteenth, we had an incident at Wigwam where there was a stabbing. Um, incident there was, we had a male subduct actually lives over there. He actually ate at Wigwam. Had some mental health issues, uh, came onto the Wigwam property. There were two guests that were hitting the vehicle, undergoat. Um, random, uh, went up, opened the door, tried to, had a hat and tie on him, tried to slash at the person. He was able to get the door shut, came around the part of the property, called the police, saw the subject again, took him, ended up striking him in the face, causing laceration, and then fled the scene from there. Officers responded, were able to, uh, find him over at, leaving the Wigwam, at the old one in Wigwam over here, where he was under arrest, and then he was booked with aggravated assault for that. Uh, victim ended up being okay. They were, uh, visiting here from Canada, but, uh, no serious, uh, any injuries for them. They're probably going to come back. We also had, uh, another big one over at Valoma Village. Uh, we got a five o'clock in the morning on the seventh of June. We had, uh, an alarm go off where a male had broken the window, had gone in, started to fire alarms. And, uh, then we ended up setting up a perimeter. Uh, we ended up catching him. Apparently he has some type of alternate state, maybe drugs or something. He was placed under arrest. He ended up assaulting one of our officers in the process. We had aggravated assault, so we were going to get drug pressing charges. Uh, he was here actually visiting Vegas, so it wasn't local. He dropped his mom off for, uh, cancer treatment. Was supposed to be heading back. She said that was unlikely. I'd never had an incident before, but we did find, uh, possible drugs on him, so we're still waiting to result back for that though, so, um...
Was that Valoma, that you said?
Yeah. And then, um... Then we also had on, uh, the twenty-eighth, we had had a welfare check over up of, uh, in Litchfield Greens, of, uh, older male subduct had been hurt up for a few days from family. We did a welfare checking that he was deceased. Uh, there were no signs of alcohol, but we were able to buy his family and then, uh, help with the services and stuff to get an attorney shows his, uh, everything. Any questions from Council or...
Questions? Let me, then we'll ask you.
So, just looking at this, the first question, there's a lot of uptick in, uh, more violence than we see? Would you agree with that assessment?
Uh, I wouldn't necessarily say more violence. I think maybe a couple, we had a couple of big ones that stand out. Um, like the one over at the Wigwam right there, the one over at Valoma.
Right.
Uh, but I think that ended up being more random than anything. Um, that gentleman from, that was at Wigwam, he was, uh, he had some mental health issues, uh, talking to the family. We had actually had calls for service in the past with him. Nothing without extreme, but suspicious person calls, where things we could tell weren't quite, quite right with him. And then the other one, just I think happened, was again, was a random, uh, from Vegas driving back through, just happened to find his way here on the way back, and that's where he, uh, drugs kicked in, or whatever it was, that made him do what he did.
And then the other question I had was, um, for transients, are we seeing an increase in transient activity?
Um, I, I would say yes and no. I mean, I think that, um, everywhere is seeing more transients, or, I say we're like everybody else, but I would say we are very low compared to most areas still. Our biggest area we see that is probably by Camelback Park, just because it's the wall right there. It's really easy for them to be at the shopping centers and then jump that wall behind, try to find a place to sleep. Our radar officers check in every night, so they go over there because we have reports of that, and have been checking every night because they're usually over on the, like, the church is checking over there, or the parking lot is coming over, but that seems to be our biggest uptick is just right there.
I'm just wondering if those are numbers, maybe we should just be tracking just to see if we see a trend in that. Um, and I also was concerned that see, um, and, you know, in the summertime, into the summer, kids haven't gone back to school yet. I know that everybody gets, wound up, but a lot of, uh, seem like there was a lot of family disputes, a lot of, uh, emotional stuff all along.
Yes, we did have, I would say you are correct, we did have, we've had a lot of death fights, uh, a lot of, like, DV situations. You see more community charges and stuff like that, which I think you are right, it is typical when it's hot and there's a lot of things going on. Kids going back to school, you know, financing of the economy. I think that perfect storm, it is definitely one of our busier months as far as cultural service for that.
I just think it's, um, I'm not, I'm not sure what we do after that one.
I will say one thing, that is nice, is our city prosecutor works very well with us. Uh, I'm working, I've been down here for twelve years before here, and not going to have it hard, but I will say ours is very good at picking up charges, which is very good at deterring, if charges get dropped, it makes it real easy, wouldn't have a lot of consequences. So, ours is very good at picking up charges and following through. It helps deter it from repeating over and over again.
Any, any other questions? I, I'm going to ask by Councilman Claire, please make sure we're using our rights, because he can't hear us. I'm sure we might want to put your mic over.
Do you want to tell me what to say?
We're sharing.
What's that?
Do you want to tell me what to say?
No, just so you let, Councilman Claire, if you're there, we'd love any of you what you're saying.
Um, first of all, thank you for your service. You guys are doing a great job here in our, our community. Um, in reading the report, I noticed that, uh, flock cameras, uh, you report on all of various incidents over the month. Um, but usually the last few words in that, in that paragraph are, and then, nothing happened, you know, basically. Is this, is this flock system, is it, is it working for the community? Is it working, maybe working for you guys, great, but is it working for us?
Oh, absolutely. It's, uh, it's very effective. So, the alerts you see on here are when we get an alert, a stolen vehicle or, uh, stolen license plate, and it notifies us, so we can try to kind of locate it.
Right.
But we do utilize it a lot where it's not an alert, but we use it to help solve investigations like that, uh, like the hit and run right there for the stop sign or the yield sign. We use the flock to get the license plate to identify the company. So we do use it in a lot of our investigations, but it doesn't get, put as a flock alert, because it's not an actual alert for like a stolen vehicle or a leak.
Okay.
And I would say the less alerts, the better, because less stolen vehicles are actually entering our city. And I would say the less alerts, the better, because less stolen vehicles are actually entering our city too.
Right, I just like to hear that, because we invested probably close to a hundred thousand dollars of our citizens' revenue.
Sorry, counsel McLaren, so like Ray just mentioned, it has, like, remember a couple months ago, we had a dog that was stolen.
Right.
Resident dog.
Without the use of that block, we would have never done that. So, and it's not a license plate, I mean, all for everything, but it's prescription, and it showed a person, and we did some tracking to find it out. He was the same individual that stole somebody, like a gator sat by side in the Wigwam.
Sure.
The year prior, so same individual, so without the block, we would have never done that, so.
Those licensed citizens know that that's, that isn't my lost friend.
And it was my neighbor that made that call, and she said the first thing they said is, where are you? Because they knew the car had come in, but they didn't know where it was, so she identified, and that's how they found him, so.
How many flock cameras do we have?
Couldn't tell you the exact number, but we had.
Three, thirty-four.
Thirty-four, that's right.
I think we need to think of that as thirty-four officers with pairs of eyes, because that's what it is. You know, you can't put someone in each one of those entrances and afford that.
Right.
And this is giving us that kind of coverage, having an officer signed in there.
And again, we have quite a bit, even ones that, I put serious stuff on here, but there's even ones where it ends up being like no charges, where we're accused of. And we end up using the flock camera, and the person ends up, they still only work it out, they have all those charges to have to step back. So it ends up not being a crime, because they still only work it out, it's going to the flock that will help us get the property back and work that out.
So how unfortunate this, counsel Rowan, is the chief can attest to this, we're looking to, of course, want some of the city back now, so. City will feel this kind of, it sounds good, but chief.
Five minutes out. But we won't charge you too much.
All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your report, and your research, thank you. All right, next item to you is a report for finance, which will be presented by our city manager, because Paige, she's ill, she's sick.
Yes sir, she is. Mayor council, as the mayor said, Paige called us, she committed, and she is sick. She did send me some bullet points, so bear with me, of course, this is Paige's part, but not mine, so I'm just going to go over her bullet points for the most part. Finance is working in two fiscal years right now, as FY twenty-three is still open, and FY twenty-four began July first. For those of you that don't know this, the city fiscal year is July one through June thirty. So we're still closing out last year, although we're in this year. FY twenty-three will close in August, and finance will present a preliminary finance report in September, and the auditors will be here in mid-September. So you can expect that annual audit sometime around Christmas. Tonight's report, the city of your package, is for the first month of FY twenty-four, which is eight percent of the fiscal year, and we'll start with sales tax report. Excluding construction sales tax, July twenty-twenty-three is thirteen percent higher than July twenty-twenty-two. Retail sales are nearly flat from last year, but online sales are up a hundred and fifty-six percent. She did note that slightly skewed is some online sales reported as retail and vice versa. Our restaurants and bars are up five percent, utilities are up sixteen, and rentals are up thirteen percent. All other categories are nearly flat against July twenty-twenty-three. Twenty-two. Construction sales tax is fifty-seven percent lower than July twenty-twenty-two, and at six percent of budget estimates. However, we know of planned projects that should come along later in the year. Any questions on that report? Yes sir?
That, that, the Wigwam, I saw the article that they're about to get out, they're resorting to that, so that, that's what that is.
That will be part of it, yes sir. Some of it will be at the Loma as well. Any other questions on sales tax? Moving into finance report. General fund revenue through the end of July totaled one million three hundred forty-eight thousand four thirty-two. That's nine percent of budget estimates, so that's right there where you want to be. Sicker revenues at eight percent of budget estimates, licensing permits are at one percent. Recreation services nine percent, special events is a two percent, but as Tricia would tell you, special event season hasn't started yet. Interest earnings are at twenty-three percent of budget estimates, so we're happy with that. As of today, there's just over twenty-six million dollars invested with the state investment pool, and that fund yielded five point nine, five point one nine percent in July. Operating expenses are at nine percent of budget estimates, some departments are overdue to expenditures, for example. The payment for our police is quarterly payments, of course, some months are going to be higher than others, but it all averages out. This brings the net general fund operations to the end of July to a hundred ninety-four thousand dollars, and revenue over expenses. We have spent forty-nine thousand dollars in capital expenses, thirteen grand for flood control, and thirty-six thousand for underpass wall repair. That brings a net positive increase to the fund balance by three hundred forty-one thousand dollars to the end of July. Beginning fund balance at twenty-three million is an estimate right now, again, as FY twenty-three is still open, so watch for changes there. Special revenue funds. The HERF fund has received forty-one thousand dollars of revenue and interest earnings, which is eight percent, so it's right on track. So far, we have not spent any HERF funds, but there are planned projects. The estimated ending HERF balance at the end of July is seven hundred eighty-two thousand dollars. I would watch for that HERF balance to drop, I know that Keith has the Indian School Intersection project coming up soon, so we will be spending some HERF funds shortly. We did receive the series twenty-twenty-three bonds for Litchfield Square in the amount of eleven point five million dollars. Those monies are currently being invested with stifle. Interest earnings on that money through the end of July was fifty-six thousand dollars. Mayor council, you may remember, we've decided to use city money first, before we use the bond money, so the bond money can grow interest while it's sitting there. So that's, that is what we're doing. We haven't received any slip revenue yet, the majority of revenue comes in October and March, and proper taxes are due. Expenses to the end of July are nineteen thousand dollars. Court enhanced revenue through July is two hundred and thirty-two dollars, with expenses of thirteen hundred. And we have budgeted that to pay the courtroom rents, the computer fees, and office furniture. Any questions so far? Sorry for my drawing, I was trying to miss some points. Thank you. Finance report. The total estimated ending fund balance at the July thirty-first is twenty-three point three million dollars. Of that, one million point eight seven is the required fifteen percent minimum fund balance. Four point three is the required thirty-five percent stabilization revenue, and seventeen point eleven is unassigned. But again, there are future projects that will come from those monies, such as the Hilltop Restoration Cost this year, budgeted for nine hundred thousand dollars. Actual capital cost of approximately three million dollars. Litchfield Square construction cost of ten million dollars. And again, one-time construction sales tax revenue will be applied to one-time CIP costs, before we use any city cash reserves. Any questions on that report? Thanks, Mayor Council.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes sir, Mr. Mayor, it does.
So I didn't see any questions, so I'm going to throw it to our superintendents now. Next item on the agenda is a report of contamination, both of PGA North plume and the Air Force PFAS. Because remediation investigation.
Mayor, this is counsel, start off with the PGA North update. Not a lot actually happened over the summer, looks like a lot of the crews that are doing weldwork remediations are ready to come for a plume climate. But we did notice that two of the previous injection or extraction wells, kind of to the east of the ballpark, the Guder ballpark. The switch over from extraction to injection is a very clear indication that the plume is receding. So what they're going to do is they'll, you know, step, stair step kind of way as it goes inward, which is to the south and through the west. They'll start turning a lot more of the extraction wells into injection wells. And what that does is it puts remediated water back into the ground, and pushes it south. Mr. Rowan, you mentioned the plume and the readings, we did get no venom readings that showed no trace of TCE or raid. So, historically, they showed very low numbers, but now they're, they're almost zero. So that is a bigger indication, the plume is receding south. The city, or the city of Goodyear has a couple of wells, unfortunately, down south, they have a couple of wells that are showing higher TCE concentrations. That's kind of a good and bad thing, we actually had a few of those closer to the Roosevelt Irrigation Canal a couple of years ago. When the plume is receding, the concentrations kind of push together, and some of the wells that wouldn't have normally bred that way. PGA does have that, which, well, I say it's good and bad, because now there are also portions of the plume receding down there as well. So overall, broad spectrum, the PGA North plume is getting smaller. With that, that's all I have for the PGA plume, any questions?
Questions? Well, the plume matter, a couple of items.
It's a good question, it's one that I've asked a couple of times, so the, the map I've shown to councilmen and staffs several times, with, if you recall, the elements, greetings and oranges. For the most part, that's the model, the result of a model. They don't know exactly where it is at all times, but what they can do is, as they see it receding, or if it gets worse or if it moves, they drill wells and take machines. And so, ultimately, it's going to be a never-ending chase. What they'll do is they'll keep all of those drilled wells active, and keep monitoring them, make sure the TC concentrations don't just all explode or change dramatically. There are, there are super fund sites over the country that are over fifty years, or that have been closed down for fifty years, and are still monitoring it for the exact same reason, so. Will never get rid of the hundreds. The benefit to TCE, in terms of where ethylene, is that the remediation is simple, you suck down the ground, you let it sit in the pond for a while. The TC evaporates, and you put that water right back in there. They just have to get the water first. So, a new, a new one we added to the list is Luke Air Force Base remedial investigation, that was kind of, that I just prepared, as I just got some of this information. So, and, of course, we don't have the records, so we'll walk along. The Luke Air Force Base, called it remedial investigation, because back in two thousand and two, EPA actually took Luke Air Force Base off of a super fund list, off the NPL list. Because all of the surface treatments, all the surface contamination was remediated to their approval. What didn't happen, which is, this is where it's straight away from what's happening in PGA North, is that the underground plume was never isolated or found. It is, this is actually part of the concern that the city has with the Luke Air Force Base plume, is because we also don't know where any of it is. And they, in talking to the consultant that Luke Air Force Base Department of Defense has hired, nobody knows where it is. So, what is happening, what spurred this issue is that Tannic Environmental, this is a subdue department of defense, submitted several permits for monitoring. We approved several of them, with understanding that all they were doing was basically checking along Camelback to make sure that nothing had caused the situation apart. They subsequently submitted multiple other permits, because those previous drill wells didn't result in readings that they can understand, or appropriate, or give final numbers on. That's why they came to us, so. Start with page two, a quick map, I highlighted what is section seven and section six on the Air Force Base. South Fire, Department Training Area, and the North Fire Department Training Area, and these are the areas where, since nineteen forties and fifties, their firefighters did simulation training and sprayed PFAS into the ground. They sprayed it onto fires, and things that were on fire, and then they let it just run off into the dry river beds and creeks. Things ultimately had made its way to the water wash. That's where our concern comes in, the water washes out of the valley. Slide number three is abbreviated timeline, it started in nineteen forty-one. Nineteen seventy-two is when, had to live it off, and everybody found out what was going on. So nineteen seventy-eight, the restoration program, which was spurred by the Department of Defense, identified, investigated, controlled. And in nineteen eighty-one, they initiated the investigation onsite, and remediate the past access materials. Nineteen ninety, is when Luke Air Force Base was placed on the NPL list, so became a super fund site. And September later that year, EDQ, EPA, ADWR, and the Air Force all signed what's called the Federal Facilities Agreement. Really what that is, is all these, is all these jurisdictions take together to make sure that we're all on the same page with what happened. Depo, like, defer resources to help get them. And then ultimately, in February twenty-two, it was taken off the super fund site, and as you can see, the, well, it's no longer a super fund site, it's a local surface remediation required.
Because it was cleaned up.
Because it was cleaned up and remedied to the EKG line. I can't tell you how many documents I should forward through, and I haven't scratched the surface, there are hundreds of thousands of documents that exist between nineteen seventy-eight and two thousand and two. That are, it's enormous, enormous database. So, since two thousand and two, there's no documentation, so we have nothing to give us the city information of what the issue is, why they're asking for the monitoring wells. If we never asked a question, I can tell you that we wouldn't be as far along if we were. The team, who is again a consultant for the Department of Defense, is not reaching out to our, that's why I put a question mark at this, it's two thousand and two, I don't have information. The next slide is really just a summary of information that is prevalent out of the millions and thousands. Monitoring wells are all over, but it's only the Air Force Base and surrounding area. Regentory water sampling happens weekly, from my understanding, and this is all in the period before two thousand and two. And then since two thousand and two, they have tapered it down. Treatment plant, there's a treatment plant over on the northeast corner of El Mirage in Glendale. That is close related to the Valley Utilities Issue, that I'm sure everybody here is familiar with, that was also a PFAS contamination. When we were reading PFAS coming through that treatment plant, and that's how they put it, it's an issue of law. Public notifications have come across those, and then five-year plan, so every five years, it seems like the Department of Defense initiates another five-year plan. But we are in the fifth year of a five-year plan, and are just not being made aware of the situation. Current concern and effort, polyfluoroalkyl substances, that's what PFAS is, it's primarily used to fire charred at the Air Force Base, that's the primary discharge. Areas are north side and south end, training occurred, so they ignited, and sprayed the chemicals, they tossed it off into the storm drains, and it's for that, for decades. It's a long-lasting chemical, it's similar to the Tepon that's on cooking. Actually, those two chemicals are the most prevalent, equal in blood samples of most people in the world. PFAS is widely, it's checked by the system already. What's not on here is the treatment for PFAS is not pleasing, it requires forced induction, it's in the filters. And the filters have to be basically blockable, and they're contractable, similar to new buildings. Concentrations are unknown, we do not know if we're in a healthy or dangerous concentrations. And groundwater pumping south of Camelback has caused the plume to move south, and then there's underground pressure just northward delivery is. This kind of tapers into the pressure issue that we're having, they can't build anymore wells, because there's contamination there. And then Luke Air Force Base and Department of Defense, as I mentioned, were asking for multiple ones. The last pa, or the site on this last page is a map, I just wanted to show counsel where we're being requested to, for well locations. The blue arrows are outside the city limits, but they were submitted in an package to us. The brown arrows, more or less on the south side of Camelback, there's two of them to the west of Bill's Parkway, and there's one that was built right at the northwest corner, that's our Camelback. Those are currently in operation, and approved and permitted. The red ones are, there's four additional, three additional red ones, one in Scout Park, they want another one over at Mining Point. And apparently, one of the wells that go over there on Bill's Parkway is not deep enough, so. As of right now, we have no, I can't tell you where the plume ones are, or the concentrations, and we have. And we have not authorized any of the permits. Waiting for discussion and additional information from the Air Force Base representatives. So I wish I had more information, but I probably don't.
There is some slanting more information than what the city needs. What I found out about these wells being drilled, and the fact that we didn't have anything in writing from the government about what the wells were for, all we're going to get are quartz mineral wells. We had nothing other than that they're drilling as well as instructing staff not to commit any more wells. And since then, I talked directly with the Air Force Base. And we're not going to do any more drilling until we have an agreement that describes exactly what it is we're doing and how the communication flows and what they want. And we're not going to do the agreement until they come to the show part of the Capitol Building hearing where they explain to our citizens exactly what they're doing, why they're doing it, what the purposes are. So we're going to have some transparency and accountability for this whole process, and we'll do it in more ways. There's lots of questions, I'm sure, and at this point, your questions are difficult to answer, but they will be answered through this public hearing process. I urge you to keep your questions until that time. This is not a brand-new thing. It's not something that all of a sudden, there's a new health danger. It's not something for us to be particularly worried about. Liberty Water has known about this issue for more than ten years. They have assured us that they do filter the water sufficiently so that we have, we do not have any significant amounts of these chemicals left on Ring One. We have to take Liberty at their word on that. Maybe there's more information coming from Luke, and they end up requiring some reports from Liberty to make sure that we understand back of what they're testing for. So it's an ongoing issue, and it's one that we will be working on. There's more information to add.
I can confirm that Liberty Wells do use a PFAS filter. So they do do that up there on the north side of Camelback before they go into the water.
Okay, so any questions?
Lots of questions, not too many answers.
It's good, because there's more questions than answers at this point. But we will get answers for every question and for all of them. The next step is scheduling a public hearing, a public presentation. I have talked about doing that towards the end of the summer, the start of spring, start of fall. So that we make sure we have residents back in, back from their summer vacations and whatever. So it will be scheduled shortly, but I'm going to guess sometime September or October.
They've made the request that that's what we're discussing with Department of Defense and the wheels of that government a lot slower.
Yeah, this is, it's not, it's unusual situation in that a lot of places, a lot of these areas where they're developing, it's all county. Now we can't put the county to anything. It's different because now they've come to this, now that we're not, we're not going to have to drill in our land. We don't know exactly what it is they're doing, and we don't have a clear line of indication so we know what reports are we going to see and when. That's right now, we have wells up there that they pulled samples from, and we don't know what the results are, and that's not acceptable. Even if they can't understand what the date is, we need to see the date, and we need to know why you can't understand it. So we've got to work through all that, and we'll do that before they drill any more wells. Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, that takes us down to our report on Capitol Improvement Projects, also with Mr. Grant.
I won't go too far.
You won't do what?
I won't go too far.
You won't go too far. You stand right there.
All right, start off, Stack Park Parkinot has been completed. His budget was two hundred and sixty-five thousand, contract was two sixty, and the contractor came in and discovered it was a hundred and fifty-eight, so he came out with a budget. While also adding a little bit of scope, I'll work with council and ROMAC, a few things, it's a pretty sharp parkinot. Litchfield Mill and Overlay, Litchfield Road Mill and Overlay is completed, it's all painted, and also, well, it's completed striping, so it's open and also looks beautiful. They came back and did a little bit more touch-up right here with Wong. A lot of notice in us today is the crosswalk and the arrows are freshed up. Southwest Valley Truck Study, we're doing with MAG, the last two months have not moved a lot of data. We had a meeting, so there's not a lot of physical data that I can report on that's any different than previously, other than they're taking the calculations and they're comparing and analyzing remedial efforts. So things like increased speed limit reduction, increased enforcement, load noise payment, surface treatments, signal timing optimization, barriers and buffers of combination or individual walls or vegetation. Another idea that they brought forward was that we can go to navigation apps and specifically request that Camelback is not a truck or a drone navigation apps. So we'll wait to see what those results are, because what they're going to do is go order them in what they believe is the best financial and practical and more threatening. We completed the traffic studies. There were fifteen traffic studies. Our on-call consultant, a combination of speed study at Camelback, there was multiple stop sign studies along Villanueva and Millland and Orange. We also had a crosswalk analysis completed over there on Park at Ovi over by Millennium. We've had a lot of reports where there's a bus stop over there and the kids are just running across Park to go to high school with an designated crossing. We also had Village Parkway, Villanueva, Bird Lane had speed mitigation studies. We did a right turn lane warrant analysis on northbound Litchfield at Camelback. We also had a signal warrant at one hundred and thirty-seventh in Camelback, at the private development area to the east side of the Fry's Fuel Center. All these reports are in, and we're going to determine what the file recommendations are, which will be before and after the things in the Capitol for this year, next year. So for CIP projects, Camelback Parkinot, the design has kicked off. We've engaged the on-call consultant to start ploner and survey, so they're getting going on that. And they're working parallel to the primer haul and right turn lane work that's happening in Camelback. So two different consultants, both doing the survey, ploner design, and currently. Bird Lane Speed Humps, we have engaged contractor, initiative video to remove two speed humps, either on the east or west side of the tunnel, because they prevent drainage from moving down Bird Lane. They backed up the houses either side of the tunnel or actually lower than Bird Lane, so the speed humps puddled up and actually flooded out quite a few of those homes during the last rain event. So we're going to take those speed humps out and install some detriment in the speed humps. We've already got approval from the city, Gitter Fire. I will send the details over to them. They're capable of proposing. We've got a maintenance space for the wheel. Flashing stop yield signs, Bullock Works received a quote for just about eight, two hundred dollars. For three solar-powered flashing yield signs to be installed at the roundabout. And four solar-powered flashing stop signs at the oldest intersection. These will be installed by staff. I will say that the project quoted does not have a turnoff switch, it will flash only for seven. There is an option at approximately a thousand dollars per sign to include a radar. Then basically it'll start flashing once it reaches, once it reaches a car, now we've got a predetermined depth, usually two hundred feet away. That is something we're in discussions with city manager if we want to move that out. So the cost will go from eighty to about fifteen thousand. Radar, solar, speed limit signs, we have two from a grant. Bullock Works, we're going to get additional signs, we're going to procure the poles, and Bullock Works staff's going to place those existing speed limit signs. Camelback, that is at Camelback, and we're going to procure two additional signs similar to anybody that's been on Boulder, just south of Midian School. It has a, it's a long hail, it's a, not a, a speed limit sign, but it is very prevalent. That idea for that particular design would be placed on Litchfield Road at the first curb, just past the first curb. Now, we already know about our southbound. I am going to look into whether we place those now or wait until the speed limit signs have a chance to take effect and enforcement has had a chance to get people to slow down. So we're already placing thirty-five mile an hour signs on Litchfield Road that should have an effect. We're engaged at effect before we pull the trigger on putting those flashing signs.
What would you say, coming soon, thirty-five mile an hour?
It's coming. It's soon. Traffic signs, citywide, I'm working with Kyle, Bullock Works, we have, I think, there's about fifty-one primal signs, a combination of thirty-five mile an hour signs. We're actually, what was it, twenty? About twenty thirty-five mile an hour signs, we're just replacing forty-five of the insurance signs. So we're going to have a lot of them. We have the J brake signs, pedestrian crossing signs, additional parking signs, so we're very nervous, and staff will pick those up. As Matthew kind of mentioned, I started getting school road reconstruction project is getting going as well. We should enter the pre-final design phase shortly. We are going to have a team with that ability to just happen with their right way, but I'm sure they're going to be very happy to have a portion of their road rebuilt, I think, possibly. I did want to touch a little bit on the pressure, our water pressure. We are, we have engaged to test hydrants. We were specifically told by Liberty Utilities that our consultant's not allowed to touch their hydrants. I just wanted to make that update. So what we'll do in the next phase is finish scouring the city to ensure that we're not going to have one hydrant that has been put out of service for the next season. That's all I have for the Capitol. Any questions?
What is it, an amendment or?
I'm sorry.
That was real loud.
Just, and I don't know if this is directed to you or should go our turn. If we have hydrants that aren't able to function, do we need to do anything with regard to our liability insurance? Do we have any liability to them?
We don't.
I know they're not our.
I'm going to defer that one to you there. They're not our property, so we have very little control over what we can do. We are in the process of trying to address it, so.
We're going to find a way to test those hydrants. We're working diligently with staff, so you're going to figure that out. Probably, yeah, we're going to test those hydrants.
We did correspondence from city Gitter Fire that low-pressure hydrants, they do run to lumber trucks. So that we follow, one pushes, one holds, more or less. So I think, yeah, the analogy, the exact scope, I think at this time, they're going to roll both trucks at each call that would be fired. It's additional resources, it's going to be additional stress. But the ability to have those two trucks, you can suck the water out instead of having available pressure. It will work. You will just take everybody else out of water for a little while, while the fire has the attention it needs. That's the answer to it.
It is a search, excuse me, search problem. It's, every possible avenue you can to address it. Any other questions? How's the ROMAC?
Sure, turn that. No, you can answer.
Okay, thank you for your reports.
Thank you.
Now we have a report on special projects with Mr. Ford.
Mayor, Council, VDP, this will be a report on various components of Litchfield Square project. Village Parkway, April five, I was working with Wigmont Boulevard, it's under construction. It's pretty much complete between Litchfield Road and Old Litchfield Road. The one section that our general contractor, AKA, got the count of the two, you have, is adjacent to the Church of Litchfield Park. And we have extensive coordination efforts between the city, Aken Gardner, and the church. They attend, the church attends our weekly coordination meetings, and it's just a matter of time before. That section of Litchfield Parkway is built from Old Litchfield Road west to the, basically Desert Avenue. There's a new traffic circle that, if you go out to the site, you can see those improvements today. Decorated concrete at each of those intersections on Litchfield Parkway is pretty much completed. Landscaping is complete, median lighting, we have a pretty neat visual component to Litchfield Square with enhanced lighting system for all of Litchfield Square. We did some testing, Aken Gardner did it back in June. I think the videos of some night, night testing of the variable light signs is available on the city website. Most of the paving has been done with the section of the front, front of church, as I mentioned. And as we speak, crosswalk papers are being installed. We still have a designated area for pedestrians to know where they're shooting across the street through Litchfield Square. Moving next to Honeysuckle Street, that's the first street north of Wigmont Boulevard. As we put in Matthew's city manager report, we have a full temporary road closure that started up by the July twenty-fourth. That's the section of Honeysuckle that was in very poor condition, frankly, the asphalt was really torn up, it was very uneven surface. The road is temporarily closed between Old Litchfield Road and Desert Avenue. And I'm happy to report that before later a weekend, the road will reopen to traffic. Between my office, the city manager's office, Aken Gardner, and our designing team, we've had extensive coordination efforts with all the merchants and property owners on the south side. Honeysuckle recite from a waterline break that I believe was three weeks ago tomorrow. That's really been the only issue that we've had, that waterline was not identified in the plans. It's old waterline that nobody really knew about. Aken Gardner made a quick repair, coordinating with public works, and there's porters in the morning, waterline break before most of the visitors opened. So it was taken care of very quickly. There is a lot of concrete work that's been done. If you've been out there to see on the north side of Honeysuckle, we're putting in new angle parking on the north side of the street. Most of that concrete work has been done. I believe it's this week, the actual paving, asphalt paving for the parking spaces is pretty much been laid down. The south side of Honeysuckle, next to most of the restaurants, this is the tea shop. We have poppeth holes. Most of that concrete work is done. And actually, on the south side of the street, there's parallel parking. Those parking spaces were paved, and here real quickly, in a couple of weeks, the road net will be complete. And then the pavement will be completed. And as I said, the road will be open, reopened, opened before September fourth, that's Monday, Labor Day. The road won't be completely done, but it will be, at least be reopened, the traffic and pedestrians. So part of this street project is new street lighting. So we're going to have three new streetlights that were there before on Honeysuckle. Most of the underground work for the streetlights on the north side of the street have been completed. And the electric- And the electrical subcontractor is doing most of the underground work on the south side of the street as we speak. Councilmember James asked about the manager, about what is Lot Three? That's the property that about a year ago, the city sold to a private developer, developer might refer to this, and developing, likely. The private name is Heritage Plaza Litchfield Square. And as Matt mentioned, those construction plans are in full review. All of our technical teams, planning, which is myself, building safety, Public Works, engineering, we're all reviewing the plans. And hopefully, we'll return comments back to the update very quick. Just a few minor details, so this is a private developer project, it's a two-story building. It's roughly about forty thousand square feet of office, retail, restaurant space. The project includes a building height of forty feet, which is allowed by zoning. Hundred seventy-three parking spaces are proposed as parking site plan. One hundred eight of those would be permanent spaces, and then to the north, a city-owned property, the Scout Lodge. Approximately, there will be sixty-five temporary parking spaces that would be installed as part of this project. From a landscaping side of things, the project would have about twenty-four percent of the site would be landscaped, so very lush, be keeping with the look that we've got here in Litchfield. And then finally, I was a part of this, but back in June, there was a television show called The American Dream. They were out there filming, interviewing a number of staff. Back in June, filming the project itself, and that filming concluded about six weeks ago. I did check their website, no episodes or have airps waiting for the final editing, and hopefully we'll have a report. The television show itself is available on the screening service, and once I have more people on, I'll report back to Mayor Council, city manager's office. And then finally, the Perkery wall that we used to have in Litchfield Park that ties in with the city from a design standpoint. The most recent one was done before I was onboard as the city planner. It was completed on Litchfield Road, we're gonna be extending that project, it's called Perkery Wall. It exists, there were three blocks, but the north side of Litchfield Square, three individual property owners. Though that project is going out to bid with this month. As a precursor to that, about a month ago, the city clerk and I are working out all the details with getting temporary construction easements for all three property owners, all three households, and those neighbors are excited with the design. And basically, we'll be extending that wall. If you look at the north side of Litchfield Square, we'll be basically extending the same Perkery wall design. It's about six, eight feet with a decorative finish that we base. The airline canal there is through there, so next time we come in here, I'll have some visuals that I can share with Mayor Council. That's our update on Litchfield Square. We have any further questions with the council?
Questions?
It's not really a question, but my husband's a YouTuber, constantly watching, and because he searches Litchfield, the video popped up the other day.
It did, okay.
Yes, and you can find it on YouTube, and it's still involved in, did a really good job.
Thank you, all right.
James, so those posters you sent by here, like how those three trucks, that's the one where you got the woods posted up, and it's sprayed on your police fix, and that's what we're talking about.
Exactly.
And then, I just, to the, to the landscaping in the, that's, that's sitting there right now? Did the water get turned on to maintain there, or who's maintaining landscaping?
Mayor, Councilmember James, so we have an onsite meeting. We, myself, Public Works Engineering, Aken Gardner, and all of our subs on the underpass underneath Litchfield Road. When we're out there, we're getting on, on us, but there really is not a very good landscaping talent there. And basically, all of us are walking on really unfinished surface, and basically dirt without any vehicles around. So we're looking at a future project of some kind of top layer, so it's industrial surface, and get some water on, on the plants there.
But right now, kind of, you pop up the new village coming east towards Litchfield, like, there's just no big palm trees, and Robert Hurley driving us just into the.
Correct.
Drive around the city, about one percent of the plants are dead right now because of the heat.
We, we have, and I mentioned the weekly coordination meeting with our general contractor, those are every Thursday. At the meeting the last couple of weeks, the subcontractor for landscaping, Z S D L, that's the group that's been installing all the papers, the landscape and irrigation. Undoubtedly, each week in the coordination meeting, it comes up about, one, how extreme of a summer we've had from a weather standpoint. High temperatures, they've had a difficult time keeping the plants alive. The palm trees, as you mentioned, are pretty hardy, and their tubes are placed in the ground, PVC tubes for, to water almost ten feet, so they will take hose and they get expensive watering, so hopefully the trees will.
Any other questions? All right, excuse me, thank you for your, for your report.
Thank you.
Next item of business is a reporter on the magistrate court that is interacted. Any questions about magistrate court, take them to the city manager. It takes us to our consent agenda, item nine A three K. Is there any number of the council that wishes to take any one of these items off of the consent agenda? Go for the expression. If not, then is there motion to adopt consent agenda items A three K, nine A three K. Aloud in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those on the phone? Can we get a vote from them? Yeah? I thought I heard Vice Mayor, I know it was a little meeting last night, but we gotta identify who voted on, for all of them, so. Vice Mayor, how do you say?
He said aye.
Do we have it, we can identify that he said aye. Councilman Claire?
Aye.
All right, thank you. That brings us to our business agenda, item ten. Ten A is a, it was supposed to be the presentation of a report for waste management. And the topic was the receptacle transition program that was running very poorly a month ago. So Mr. Landham was urged to come here and explain why they couldn't seem to replace the receptacles and get a website that made any sense. He is probably not able to be here, he gave us a written report, is it in the back or not?
That's right.
You have, yes. We're gonna have to provide a written report, at least, someday a written report through the city manager. And councilmen decided that they wish to have Mr. Landham come back in September and explain it further. We had a lot of issues with people who hadn't been able to order cans, getting cans delivered, sometimes they deliver extra cans, rotten cans, it was pretty much a mess. So, what did Mr. Landham have to say for us?
Yes, sir. Mayor and Councilors, the mayor said there were a lot of what I would call transitional issues. And some of the most frequent ones, staff saw, if you remember from our contract, our contract allowed for ninety-six gallon cans and sixty-five gallon cans. We had citizens call waste management, the waste management telling them that sixty-five gallon cans weren't even an option, were not allowed, were not available. I know that happened to one of you. Another problem was that the waste management website said that there was no bulk pickup in Litchfield Park. My own wife tried to go and sign up for it, and went to see that it wasn't available, and of course, I knew from the contract that was not the case. So that was most of the issues, again, was getting cans delivered, getting the right size cans, bulk pickup issues. There were a few people that had issues with not having the thirty-five gallon cans anymore, we had a little bit of that, but mostly it was with sixty-five gallon can and a bulk pickup. Hardly apologize that he could not be here tonight, but he said he would be glad to attend in September if he would like. As far as particular things that Waste Management addressed. Number one, their IT department has fixed the wastemanagement.com website. It wasn't recognized in our zip code before, that was bulk pickup issue. They have given the city citizens a dedicated email address to send any citizen, to send any resident complaints, so that they can be addressed quicker. IT continues to work on the wonderful call tree system, for those of you that have had the pleasure of using that, as it was not recognizing certain words such as replace can, dumpster, et cetera. I do know we've had citizens that have called us and say, it's just rounding around. I say replace can, it takes me nowhere, it immediately just hangs up on me, there is no, there's no person waving in the line. I'm sure that you guys love call trees as much as I do. Also, it was set as default to East Coast time instead of Arizona time. Per one of our staff members, Waste Management has received thirteen escalation calls from residents since June who called the city. Since August, that's slowed down to averaging one a week, but it was a lot that first month. Some Waste Man, Waste Management staff since June, Waste Management has delivered six hundred and forty-one new carts and has removed or replaced three hundred and thirty carts. So I will say from personal experience, I do know that the bulk issue has been fixed. Again, you can go online now and sign up bulk pickup. Just as a reminder for anyone that doesn't know, bulk pickup now, per contract, is allowed six times per year, per house, upon customer request. So you call with the website, and they'll be glad to come pick it up, but you just do a request. They don't just drive to the city looking for bulk pickup. That was a contract change. And again, in your contract, you can have a sixty-five gallon can or an eighty-six gallon can. Or if you don't want a recycle, you could use to have two garbage cans instead of recycling and garbage can. Other questions?
I don't know. So we're part of that group that was gone for five weeks, right? Until now, everyone coming back, clearly, they're still picking up the old cans, because we don't have any one yet. And then, one of the Waste Management guys told my husband that it's a whole different group that we're talking to for the canisters. It's like Waste Management has contracted with someone else. They were lovely, and they said to me, oh, yeah, we'll pick it up on Friday, but give us a five-day leeway. So we've just left our stuff out there for, we're on day five, six tomorrow, but anyway. So I don't know if that's, if the guy that told my husband that knew that, but that's the first I've heard that I will say Hardly not relayed that information. Because Waste Management is responsible for placing the can, and there are some logistics for that. Obviously, when they pick up your old can, they have to bring you a new can, they can't just leave you canless. Right. Also, there are some citizens in the past that have never used cans, ever. They've displaced up bag, bag garbage on the curb. Yeah. So that's an issue too. Well, and obviously, so there'll be a drop dead time at some point when it's all delivered, but if the guy goes, call every day, call twice a day, I haven't done that yet, but anyway.
I'm still gonna keep an eye on there too, it's in city code that traffic cans can only go the street for so long.
Yeah.
To keep people from leaving their driveway.
Right now, so, day five today. That's Waste Management rule, not our rule.
Other questions?
Allison, Dana Watson?
Yeah, yeah, a quick question, I was reading through and I read that you get three bulk items and a pickup?
Yes, ma'am, that's good.
How are they finding three items? So if I'm doing like construction in my house and I have three large pieces of wood, is that my three items? Or is it the wood and the sink and the chair?
I would go with the, the wood, the chair, the sink, example, ma'am. I would not consider three two-by-fours as three separate items. It's three large items, people that are setting out couches, for example.
Right, right. I have another one, but it's leaving me right now, so if I can get that off my coffee in the kitchen.
Okay. One of the resident complaint I would say that we've heard about is people that have paid recently to, I don't know what you're saying, renovate their bulk pickup, their in-ground cans. Several citizens have said that, that I just paid seven or eight hundred dollars to rebuild my in-ground can service, and now you're going up on the rates. I'm sorry, I don't have an answer to that. I can tell you that there's someone in the city that's offering good rates to replace in-ground cans, if that's something people are interested in doing. Other questions?
They might just go back, make sure that they understand that their IT department understands that eight-five-three-four-zero zip code is a lot larger than the city.
Thirty-six thousand people, yes, sir.
A little bit, you know, they're gonna end up in a mess on their hands, again.
Yes, sir.
All right, Councilmember James?
So back to the, back to the business side, you know, I mean, it was messy at first.
Yes.
It's getting better, I, I just don't understand. I don't understand, I don't see why Brandon Clark back here is gonna solve anything, just keep, keep working on it. And I had a similar deal, my recycle can snapped in half one day, broken. So you know, you log into the website, it's an AI chat bot, then you go through it, yeah, no problem, we'll replace your can, it's sixty-nine dollars. And I was like, hold on, give me some, give me, eventually, you will dig hard enough, but it's just a big corporation. Kind of, you really have any other options, let us know the strategy.
No, sir, we don't, we don't have any other options, that's true. Waste Management was the only people that did our service, and that was because we have, because we have in-ground service, no one else will bid it. That being said, if you guys wanna have Clark come back and speak in September, we'll be glad to. One thing I would say, and as I told Clark this in certain terms, that you knew this was coming. You knew this contract was changing, you knew the trash cans were changing, and you knew it for six months. They didn't like who decided this in May. They had plenty of time to prepare for the contract changes, and for whatever reason, didn't. It, it is a big company, but they should do a better job of that.
It's probably not necessary we have to come back, so long as we don't put in any more problems.
I do wanna compliment the city and the staff that you sent out very good inform, information, two or three letters and so forth, so that was, that was well done.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay, then also decide, then we'll move along to the next item, which is the purchase of Public Works vehicles.
Anyway, Mayor and Council, Public Works is requesting approval for purchase of two new fleet vehicles. These vehicles are replacing two of the Boulder four that we currently have in our fleet. As you may know, Honeysuckle is the fleet maintenance on our vehicle screen. We've been advised by the fleet service coordinator to put these vehicles, these two vehicles up for auction and to replace them for the caution period, which is much greater than actual value of the vehicles. I do wanna note, due to the shortages of the vehicles during COVID, we've been on a waitlist since the later of twenty twenty-one. And they finally have released new options, built it on us, so we can actually purchase these. They're playing, they're playing catch-up due to the short, short, uh, peer chip problem that they were having for a while. So that's, that's back on the list. Other than, we have that, any other questions?
So these two trucks, one of your trucks has all painted good, basically, from at least one.
Yeah.
Is that one of these trucks?
Uh, yeah.
But what, what do we have to instruct you to get you to fix that? What authority do you need to fix the truck that looks at that?
I don't think we need authority, I think it's more just to get it handled, get the quality.
I think that it's, it's just really a reflexive adding on the, the whole Public Works process. It actually works really well, you do a great job, and the residents are happy with the way that we maintain the landscaping. Those trucks, they are representing even our neighborhoods, they can't look like that.
I agree.
Is there motion to approve purchase of these two Public Works vehicles, a slight percentage of fifty-six, that took, see, they're twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and eight dollars. Further discussion? Aloud in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Two trucks are approved.
Thank you, Mayor.
Let's get that in pink and fixed, whatever. Yeah, I do, thank you, Councilman, I didn't follow the process here. Mr. Vice Mayor, how do you vote on, on item ten D, I, uh, I or me?
Vice Mayor, that's aye.
Okay, Councilman Claire, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, thank you. So we have the numbers for item ten D. Takes us to item ten C, with consideration of ordinance twenty-three thousand two hundred and forty-seven, concerning vehicular non-access easement related to Thomas Project.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight, I have a visual to, I can pass to Council on the site location of the Thomas. So I've got a little bit of background presentation tonight for the main council. So the Thomas is located at four seventy-seven Oldish School Road, it's on the northeast corner of the East School Road. Oldish School Road decades ago was originally built as a church. And the site is an OPF, or public facility, and is currently occupied by a church campus. There is a new property owner. Brian Powers in the audience, his group recently purchased the property. Their intention is to keep the existing church on site for a period of time and then transition to allow non-church-related land uses over the course of the future. Adaptive reuse for the property might include some boutique retail, coffee shop, professional offices, and provide for some future phase expansion as the area, as the site might be more modernized. At your meeting back in January, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, the council approved a plan development for the Thomas with direction of staff to keep working on the project. This included just some of the design details relative to access to the site, landscaping, trash dumpster, dumpster locations, access to site, et cetera. Through the course of that review since January, we did some additional digging and looked back at our old white groups, the subdivision, or there is a subdivision that the church is part of. And there's what's called a vehicular non-access easement or BNAE that exists throughout the subdivision level. And the BNAE prevents any access along Indian School Road adjacent to the site. It also prevents the single-family homes that are east of, this is the Thomas property, obviously. The homes within the subdivision outlined in red is, is the Litchfield Park subdivision number fifteen dash B is the void unit three. So all of the properties along Indian School Road have to be ended. Be a process to re-inbound gates or RV gates or things like that, additional driveways on Indian School, east of Oldish School Road. You might recall before the council break that at your meeting on June twenty-first, we introduced a ordinance, the ordinance tonight, regarding potential condemnation of the BNAE. That was the initial reading. Council went up, break, and we're here tonight to adopt the ordinance. The right foundational time is to table the adoption ordinance to allow a little more work with the applicant with the property or so. With that, that's the background of the Thomas. Your answer to the questions is needed by council tonight.
Questions for council?
So at the end of, during this process at the last meeting, you might have heard Vice Mayor Faith mention that if this was going to involve condemnation, he would not support this. That was an alert and a red flag to me because I didn't have the faintest idea what he was talking about. So I called him. And we're very lucky to have Vice Mayor Faith on our, on our council for this particular thing because he just happens to be a very successful real estate lawyer. And what he told me was very alarming. So I've talked to Paul and I would like to invite him right now to please speak to the council and mention to them he's experienced this, he's been part of this. I think he was the reason we have this map right now. So I would like to invite him to just explain the condemnation process to the council. And then when he's done, I just want two more minutes. So I'm inviting council member.
Do I, do you have a timer?
Yeah, you can. It may take thirty seconds.
Mr. Vice Mayor, would you like to speak to this issue of how condemnation works?
Can you hear me good?
Yes.
Okay. As we got into this, we started looking at trying to figure out just exactly what was involved and getting this the right in, right out. Well, Joe dug into it and pulled out, he gave us a memorandum. He pulled out a covenant that basically sets aside a one-foot invisible fence all along the Child Road that nobody can cross here. It keeps all the houses that back up to, not the children, sorry, Indian School from putting in gates in their backyard to access direct onto, to Indian School. It keeps us from doing this right in, right out that we're trying to do for the parking lot going out. It's just memorandum pointed out. That covenant benefits everybody who lives south of, like, let me get to see on the way, but that's why the church, all the way between Turtle Park and the church. All those homeowners in there have to sign off to, and you can't have, most of them, you have to have every one of them have to sign off to get rid of this, this one-foot invisible fence. If they won't sign off, then we would have to go to condemnation against all of those that would not sign off. That's where I get heartbreak. Another issue I thought about has popped up, and Joe, I don't think, this wasn't in your memorandum, but every lender who is a lender on any of those properties needs to subordinate also. But if they don't, and if any of those, if any of those homeowners were to go into default and their lenders were to foreclose, this document that we had subsequent to their mortgages to get rid of this invisible one-foot fence would not be enforceable as to that one property. So we could be in a situation where we get all the homeowners to sign off and then one of them ever goes into default and gets foreclosed on, and suddenly the sign off that they did gets wiped out in the foreclosure. And it only takes any, so we could, what if in a situation where we have approved this right in, right out, we go through some period of time, one of them gets foreclosed on, and technically you got to have every one of them to get rid of it. Technically, we would come back enforce it again. I don't know how you go about that. I mean, you've got every lender and every homeowner who needs to be involved. And I'm not willing to sue homeowners to condemn their rights and take it away. That, that bothers me to medicine. And I think we need to move this thing as fast and hard as we can. It's delaying way too long. We need to, to make a decision and somehow move forward.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Vice Mayor. We have a request to speak from the audience and a request to speak from Councilor.
Okay. So I guess what I'd like to do, and I spent an hour on the phone with Paul, and so, you know, he gave me even additional information to that. And I just think to myself about, you know, let's go back to November when the council voted five to two for the developer, the staff, to sit down, dot every i, cross every t, move forward with this. And as I understand, part of that development agreement then included a redesign of the parking lot so the cars wouldn't drive into the neighborhood. So then January, Riro arrives. I didn't know about the Riro, most of the council didn't know about the Riro, the developer may or might have, but Riro arrives. We talk about Riro at the time it made sense. But if I knew then what I know now, I would have never voted for this Riro. So it's just my opinion that I think we need to go back to the November decision. And the developer and the staff sit, comes back together, redesigns that parking lot, we remove the Riro, redesigns that parking lot so that cars can't go left. But this is gonna be, in my opinion, a PR nightmare. And included in what Paul told me, you know, there can be, as, as we know, there were a handful of people that came to public meetings, so some people we not even know. And some of the information they received was misinformation, but I just think that, wow, I had no idea when Paul mentioned the last meeting dispels condemnation with condemnation then. So now I do. And that's, that's what I have.
Okay. I think your two minutes are up, thank you. All right, now we're gonna, this is what I have pretty careful. Members of the public who have asked to speak, the first speaker is Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Carter Wilson, a resident of the city. I rise in opposition to the vacation of this easement. I do not believe that it's in the best interest of the citizens of this city. I believe it will create a traffic nightmare on Indian School Road. And I urge you to, I urge you to vote against it, but at the very least, accept the recommendations to table.
Thank you. We also got a request to speak from, I think it's the council or landlord, Carolyn Oberholzer. I'll get it right.
I'll give you a few more opportunities, Mr. Mayor.
I'll let you tell us the break for next.
I will. Mr. Mayor, council members, Vice Mayor and Councilor on the phone, for the records, Carolyn Oberholzer.
That's pretty close.
Yeah, it's been my name for twenty years, so I've had some practice. I am an attorney with Bergen Brakes, Molly, Oberholzer, forty-three forty-three, East Camelback. I haven't been here in a while, but it is nice to be back. Just wanted to really say that we're here to work with the city. And I think that the developer has shown a willingness from the efforts after the meetings in January to make this Riro come to fruition. And we prepared exhibits to bring that decision point to you guys in June when we discovered that a condemnation would be necessary to acquire this because it will be in right-of-way for public dedication. And so we're, we're in support of tabling it. We are, we'd love to come back to the table and talk about alternatives or solutions. So we, we don't want to force any issues this evening and, and hope that we have the opportunity to table it and then also come back with some ideas or hear about what's important to the council so we can try and bring something back that works for everybody. So just wanted to offer that, happy to answer any questions. I am also familiar with the condemnation process and I know your city attorney is as well, so I do have some experience with that.
Questions from council?
I just said, actually, I guess the other thing I, I asked Matthew about this, which makes sense that why didn't we know about this before we voted on it? And he mentioned that's the developer's job to find it, but we didn't give him any time. We brought up Riro in Jan, in January and we voted at that very same night to do that. So that's the only other thing is, you know, I, I had no idea that this was gonna sell. Tableting it makes sense to me.
Any other comments from council? Now, I, I want to make just a couple of comments. One is, I'm not, I'm not a pro of state looking. It's not clear to me that this ordinance is going to be part of any solution because I doubt that it has enough support to pass. So I don't know why tabling it will help. I think this ordinance, if anything, is a better, it should just be, it should just be voted down. The issue of, of the development agreement is a different, separate issue. It's one that we can't speak about tonight because it's not on the agenda. That issue of the, of the development agreement can still be discussed between staff and the applicant. And if they come up with a solution or not a solution, they can bring that development agreement back to the council with consideration. Separate issue. So I'm looking, if there's good reason to, to table the current ordinances before us, I'm happy to hear what that, what that argument is. If not, I would favor just taking a vote on it. I personally do not favor condemnation. I did not realize when we were, when Ruthie brought it up that it would be a condemnation that would impact any property owners other than this particular or historical property. So I didn't realize it would have been suing forty-one, forty, or residents and potentially forty of their lien holders, which makes no sense.
So is that what we would be voting on is just to eliminate, to not do the condemnation?
Correct.
But then that leaves the Riro.
The council unit still has to go back to staff. It's, it's still with that. It's the only thing that's not for us, right? It's not, the only thing that's on our agenda is a consideration of this ordinance that calls for us to condemn, and I'm not in favor of that.
But this vote is just for the ordinance?
No.
This is, this.
Right now, we don't have anything before us, but the question, once we put a motion, it will be about this ordinance. Table this ordinance, if there's a reason to table it, or both the ordinance up or down?
But you mean the ordinance being the condemnation?
Correct. Ordinance. Twenty-three dash two seventy-four. It's just, it's the ordinance that would offer us. That's, I mean, that's, that's what's before us this evening.
It's just a point of order to table it. We still have to come back to it now.
Correct.
On demand. So just kicking the can down.
Right. I mean, I, I mean, I, my opinion is we just, we don't need to kick it down low because it's not.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. I mean, I think none of us want to do condemnation. I, I would doubt the developer wants to do this, but I don't know. He wants to knock on doors, right?
I think it's not going to work without this ordinance. This ordinance won't be in fact the city. It doesn't, it does not impact the developer, mayor, man.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor, isn't the proper procedure on this, or we have an ordinance before us, for you to call for a motion to approve? And if there is no motion to approve, or if there is a motion that is not seconded, this man does?
Yes. Well, we get, we're gonna get to that phase next, once we get done with discussion. We're gonna get to the phase to see if there is a motion, and if there is a motion, is there a second? If it's moved and seconded, then we'll bring a vote. And at that point in time, once it's removed and seconded, I guess we could table it.
And if there is no motion?
Okay, so I'm.
There is no motion, it dies.
But I'm confused. So we're voting on the city saying no to condemnation?
Correct. If we put this motion right now, right now, we are discussing this, this item. There is no motion before the council.
Nice point.
The next step is I'm gonna ask for a motion. So one motion would be to adopt this ordinance. Another motion might be to table this, this question. Another, there might be that there'll be no motion. Whatever, if there is some kind of motion, then there has to be a second. Once it's moved and seconded, now we have an item before the council. We'll have the opportunity for a little discussion, we'll have to vote, and then we would vote up or down on that motion.
But my confusion is, we, the city, are saying, if we say this, no to condemnation. So what does that do?
It puts it back in staff's hands to deal with the, with the development agreement to determine what, what staff is willing to do one way or the other, and what they can bring back to us, and then we have, we don't have to vote on the development agreement.
Okay. So we're back to what we were in November, except there's a rival still attached.
Correct. We're back, we're back to the stage of considering the development agreement. We have not approved the development agreement, it's still on.
Right, right, right.
Just the issue of condemning this non-access easement is not operating.
I have a question.
Is, is there, is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-three dash two seventy-four vehicular non-access easement? Hearing no motion, I declare this item abandoned. I guess what, what's the proper terminology to use for saying the term? If that, this motion, this ordinance dies for lack of a motion, it's.
It does for lack of a motion.
Okay, so it's, it's, that's, that's, that if this ordinance is done. All right, takes us to item number E, which is the letter of intent on Litchfield Square. This is a discussion that is here to determine what we want to do with Kephar. This is the discussion that is here to determine what we want to do with Kephar, and is one possible path, and is intended to provide an opportunity for the council to be applying the attorneys on the, on letters of intent and how they can apply to the Mitchell Square document. So is there a motion to go into the executive session?
So, so.
All is in favor of going into executive session, this would be under item.
Aye.
Of item eleven, A or D? Please say if I may say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? All right, we have heard from Vice Mayor, he was in favor. Councilman Claire?
Yes, sir.
I'll be voting on going into executive session.
I, I voted aye.
Okay, so we're moving to executive session. The item of the letter of intent is not an action item that we'll deal with tonight other than this executive session. So if we go for the business conducted, other than journey, once we get out of executive session. You're welcome to stay.
Thank you to your socialists.